Everyone, I'd like to welcome you to this Region 12 Board of Education meeting, June 15, 2015. Susan, would you take the attendance, please?
Yes. Valerie Anderson, absent. Tony Bedini. Alan Brown is here. Gregory Cava. Michelle Gora. Emily.
Emily will not be here.
James Hurstfield. Kelly Lott.
Kelly will not be here.
Jennifer Pody. Here. Michael Sinatra, absent. I'm here. Peter Taggitt.
Here.
All right, so Valerie, Kelly, Emily, and Michael are absent. We have a call on.
We have a call.
All right. Item two on our agenda, excuse me, recognition of volunteers and students. Dr. Costantino.
Yes. Come around here. This is our date for those people who could not be here for the last two meetings. And we're so happy that they were able to get here. We like to recognize volunteers, and we also like to honor our students from the schools who get our CAPE awards and our leadership awards. So I'll start with the volunteers. I don't see Erin yet, but she may still come. She was hoping she could come, but maybe I'll say it. I'm hoping these other people. No, they don't. Okay, so let's have Bill King come up. Come on up, Bill. I guess they're gonna clap for you after I talk and say all the wonderful things today. No pressure, everybody, no pressure. Hold on to this. So Bill, first of all, it's so wonderful to see a dad up here being honored, okay? And, you know, we really appreciate, especially Father's Day's coming, we appreciate all the dads and everything they do for our schools. So the staff at WPS would like to recognize Bill King as the Volunteer of the Year from their school. He's an active member of the PTO, serving as the treasurer. Bill's attention to detail, financial knowledge, and creativity has guarded the PTO responsibly, which is always a good thing. Bill has overseen many important projects, including the book fair, bus driver appreciation, and Scripps gift card program. He's always willing to listen objectively and offer advice. He's innovative and expands the limits of the PTO in positive ways. WPS proudly recognizes and thanks Bill for his generosity of time and energy and leadership. And we're very, very happy that we are able to honor him. And not only is he being honored tonight, two of his boys are being honored tonight too. So it's like a family affair, and they all couldn't be here last time because of the WPS play. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate everything. Now we have to take a picture. Perfect, thank you. Okay, good. Oh, wait, one more for the newsletter, Bill. Okay, good. Okay. So that's Bill, that's great. I don't, as I said, I don't think Erin's here yet, but we will find her. When she comes in, we'll stop the meeting and we'll figure out. Let's have Wyatt King come up. Wyatt from fifth grade, WPS. So Wyatt received this award last November, correct?
Yes.
At the Cornucopia Leadership Dinner. And Wyatt...
What award is it?
He is receiving the Superintendent Student Recognition Award, and it comes from the Litchfield County Superintendents Association. We're all allowed to choose one fifth grader from each school, one eighth grader from each school, and a junior and a senior in the high school. And Wyatt received it for his wonderful leadership skills and his academic achievement, and we're very, very proud of you, and we know you're gonna grow up to be just like your dad, am I right?
Yeah.
There you go. Congratulations. That's mom, okay. Okay, good. Okay. Another, another King child. Come on up, Wilson. And Wilson is, are you eighth grade?
Yeah.
Yeah, there we go. Wilson is in eighth grade, going to high school here in Chicago, and you'll be moving up and being promoted on Thursday evening?
Yeah.
Excited? Nervous?
Yeah.
A little bit? It'll be fine, don't worry. So Wilson is receiving the Student Leadership Board again from Litchfield County Superintendent Association, from all of the eighth graders, again, for his leadership ability, his academic success, being an all-around good guy. I know the King family are just great, great parents, and they have great children, so we're very excited about that. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, there you go. Okay, have a seat.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, now Wilson, here, I have to give you this also, you can... Okay, Wilson, this is also a certificate and a letter. Okay? And now we have Mason Zell. There we go, Mason. How you doing? Now Mason, again, is eighth grade?
Yes.
Okay, and I think I messed up a little bit, because I think he got the CAPE award, am I right?
Ah, yes.
Yes, I messed up, and that's why they put erasers on pencils. Wilson got the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Award, which is the same kind of leadership, academic success, but it comes from the Board of Ed. Mason, on the other hand, is getting the Superintendent's Award from Litchfield County, so I, you know, apologize, but you know what? They're great awards. So you're both great guys.
Congratulations.
So again, success, leadership, look at that smile. Are you graduating on Thursday also?
Yes.
Excited?
Yes.
Yet nervous?
A little.
Just a little?
Yeah.
Okay, but it's gonna be fun, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, excellent. Okay. Take a nice picture. Okay, I think last but not least, on my part, is Riley Gubow. No.
No.
It's not here. Oh. Well, Riley's not here, he must be out again, but we will have to give it finally, you know...
I'll get it.
To Mrs. Colella, give him a hug and a kiss from me.
I will, I will.
Okay, and we appreciate, he must be busy. So, Mr. Chairman, that is my part, and now you want to say...
All right. Well, congratulations to all those folks, and thanks for coming back to receive your awards. We appreciate it, and we're very honored to have you with us. If you would like to leave, now's the time to leave. You're welcome to stay.
And take a cupcake on the way, if you would like. Your cupcakes, you're on.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number three is recognition of board members. There are three board members who are, this is their last meeting with us. Our new term starts on July 1. Let me just read this. One of them is Kelly Lott from Roxbury. Kelly sent us an email saying, "I will not be able to attend the Board of Education meeting this evening because I had acute bronchitis diagnosed yesterday. I appreciate your recognition of the board members who are ending our service. Good wishes for the road ahead." Kelly Lott. So congratulate Kelly and thank her for her time, and I'm sure that we'll get this award to her. The next, I'd like to recognize Susan Stumpf, Bridgewater. Susan's been with us for one term, is that right?
Yes.
Four years?
Two years, actually.
Two years?
Moving from Morty Ford.
All right. Well, thank you for all your help and words of wisdom, and we really appreciate it, dedication. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You have any words of wisdom for us, passing, that you'd like to leave us with? Any advice?
Um, no. No. Did you get that moment, that Kodak moment? No words of wisdom.
And last but not least, Mr. Tony Bedini from Washington. Tony? Tony is ending, Tony, how many terms have you been on? Two terms, so eight years on the board. Congratulations. Tony has been, has done yeoman's work for the Board of Ed. He was the chairman of our building committee for many years. He's brought a lot of projects to fruition, spent countless hours volunteering, not only as chairman of the building commission, but spending lots of time with the facilities chairman, a lot of time at the central office. He's a consummate volunteer, he volunteers for other offices in the town of Washington. He said he was busier now, after he retired, than he ever was when he was working, so we really appreciate it and all the stuff that you've done for the board and all your time. Thank you very much. I'm gonna ask you the same thing. You must have something you could give us for some advice, or pass something.
Having any advice, it's been an interesting journey.
All right. Thank you, Tony.
Absolutely, you're right. Let's give him the standing ovation.
These chairs are getting smaller, I think.
Yeah, they are.
True, he's thinking, get chairs.
All right. As long as we're on board members, we have two of our newly elected board members with us tonight. They'll start their terms as of July 1, our first meeting after July 1 is July 13, so that's actually July 20, I'm sorry. But I'd like to recognize them from Bridgewater, Ms. Rebecca Devine. From Washington, Mr. Tony Amara. Thank you both, we look forward to working with you for stepping up to the plate, and we look forward to working with you come July. Thank you.
And we have one of the students who is here, and I don't know if Mrs. Judd is gonna speak about him.
Paris.
Yeah. Is he a part of your presentation?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so Paris, we're glad you're here, and he went to UConn for the Invention Convention, and we're gonna hear all about it, we're very excited. And so with that said, Mr. Chairman, we can move on. Please feel free to help yourself to goodies, because we're not gonna stop like we normally do.
The board is gonna move on to its regular agenda, so really, folks, if you've had enough, you can go.
You're welcome to stay, too.
You're welcome to stay, obviously. Item four is the opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items. Does anyone you'd like to address us? All right, not seeing anyone then, we'll move on to item five is the consent agenda, which is the approval of our minutes of our business meeting of June 1. Is there anyone who wants to remove anything from the consent agenda? All right, then the consent agenda is approved. Item six, report of the chair, just a few things. I did attend, along with, I saw Michelle Grass, Michelle Gora, excuse me, the high school graduation on Saturday morning. It's a wonderful event, we had beautiful weather, the humidity blew out. It's always an honor for me, on behalf of the Board of Education, to hand out the diplomas to the students. They did a great job, there were some wonderful speeches. So it was a real pleasure for me and an honor for me, and I congratulate all the students who graduated. Doug Winkle was chosen by the students to give the faculty, he was the faculty speaker, and he gave a great talk, as well as did the students. I'm sure that most of us have seen some of the athletic awards that students have won.
Excuse me, Jim, before you leave that, I just wanted to mention one other thing that I wanted to mention to you that didn't have a chance before the meeting, and that is that the Facilities Committee took special note, and I took special note, I was attending my daughter graduate, my youngest daughter graduate, that the condition of the grounds was astounding. I mean, coming on here looked like you were entering into a private preserve. It was so beautifully done, I mean, Mr. O'Leary and his maintenance crew did a phenomenal job in preparing that. Every blade of grass was in place, and it just was, it was just sensational. People mentioned it to me, and I wanted to pass it along to the board, mention it while you were talking about graduation. They, I, I think the vote of thanks is in order for the wonderful job that they did. And I was proud to be, you know, a parent of a Chicago student and a member of the Board of Education.
All right, thank you. And it is true, the place was magnificent. So thank you, Don, and your crew. Chicago Samantha Morowski placed second in the javelin at the New England Championships in Maine this past weekend. She came, I think, in fifth place in the Connecticut Open, and then she threw a throw that was 11 feet longer than her Connecticut throw at this New England Track and Field Championships at the Thornton Academy in Seco, Maine. And she's earned a trip to the national championships. So congratulations to her. Really something. And I'm sure I'll mispronounce this name, but Marc Salas Gula of Chicago won the Class S Boys Single Tennis Championship, so Class S for the state, he is the singles boys champion, so congratulations to him, he certainly brought honor to the school. And I think that's all I have for now. The middle school promotion ceremony will be this Thursday night, I believe, the 18th, and I'll be attending that, and of course, anybody here is welcome, that's in the walkway. All right, I have nothing else. Superintendent's report, Dr. Costantino.
Yes, a couple of things. Keeping up with students and awards, I just made two copies, because we are sending out a press release tomorrow, but our mobile app design class won first place at the Connecticut Expo for Student Innovation, and we are very, very, very proud of them, and Mrs. Gambino, who is their teacher, Mrs. Viles will also move them along, as far as doing a pre-expo here, and we are really, this again, it just has to be corrected tomorrow, so I didn't send it out, but I didn't want you not to see it, we have one in color and we have one in black and white. But we're very, very excited about that, and it really is a culmination of raising the level of rigor and bringing in science, technology, engineering, and math. Plus, we're in the other awards, right?
No, mobile app design actually won two awards.
Two awards?
They swept the cat.
They swept the cat, all right.
Oh, wow.
So we're very excited. That's really wonderful, so we're very happy about that. As far as the after-school program that we tried to get to Ed Connection at WPS, we did not have enough students. So right now, that's put on sideburner, we'll see what happens in the future. I want to thank Mrs. Gallo, who was out at the Washington Fair last week.
Community Day.
Community Day, and, you know, talking up Chicago with Mrs. Pody, myself. I was not there, and, but I am going July 11 to the Washington Green Fair, and then I'm gonna make my way to Pickton, wherever I'm going, and I'm looking for volunteers to come with me for Queens. This is not, I have never been to a Pickton, Pickton thing.
You don't pick and fiddle in Queens?
No, we don't.
It is so...
So that's July 11, and that is hopefully to support the Agribusiness Program, and I just wanted to give you an update on that. We are still live. Art O'Neal and his group are trying to get our school program attached in school construction, that's where we're living right now, we'll hear by the end of June. So keep your fingers crossed, and we'll see what happens. But, you know, he says we can be cautiously optimistic, so that's what we are.
Well, I just wanted to say, it's not even Art, but Art's wife was very much, like, she just really had such a strong opinion about really wanting it to pass. It was really great to not only meet Art and talk with him, but his wife as well, they were lovely. And I just want to say on a note, too, that it was greatly appreciated by the community in Washington to have Kim there. A lot of parents and members of the community were just so appreciative that she was there, not just promoting Agribusiness Program, but just being there as a supporter of Chicago. So it was really great, it was a really, really great thing.
Yes. That's my report, but...
Oh, I'm sorry, Peter.
I have a question. The special students, we have special awards, not just within this community, but that receive awards like this outside the community. Has Ann Baldwin come up with any plan, how we can get these type of things that occur when they're in competition with other students, to the general public that supports our system? One of the things, I've spoken to the superintendent about this, is, and I was talking about the graduates, I mentioned to the superintendent, I don't think people understand or know what colleges our students get into, and we had a discussion on this, and I'm sure the superintendent will bring it up in the future, but I don't think we're getting enough public relations in these three communities of the exceptional kids that produce exceptional results. And I think it's very important somehow to get that into the community. I don't know how we want to do it, it's not, I'm not bringing it up for discussion now in that sense, but I don't feel, when I'm in the community, particularly the Washington community, that people really understand the good things that happen here. And I think we need some method, I thought Ann Baldwin would be that vehicle, but I think we need to take a closer look at that. If we want to get recognition, the community support for fixing up the school system, for building, et cetera, et cetera, I don't think people know enough about what we're doing. That's my personal opinion, because no one ever says anything, but they don't, because they don't know. So I think that's something that we...
It's a good point. I know that, well, the thing that Pat just passed around with regard to the app award, that is going to Ann Baldwin tomorrow, is what I think.
Right. And this, you know, everyone got the growing forward, which had a lot of great information. It definitely is an ongoing goal, I'm not gonna say it's not. We have, Ann Baldwin is coming Wednesday with Max Wright, I believe his name is, from NBC 30, to do a newscast about the Agribusiness and about Chicago, and, you know, the wonderful opportunity for the community and the students, so we're hoping for that. We are getting a lot of calls from New Milford parents, wanting to send their students to Chicago. I want to say we have about five?
Six.
Six who have registered from New Milford. They're, everybody's coming to Chicago, not our elementary schools, but they're coming to Chicago, which is great. So, you know, we have an excellent reputation, you know, if you want to know about Chicago, you can very easily find out, I mean, the website, the newsletters, the TV, the, you know, but they're, you know, it's just so hard, it really is hard, it's a hard fight, it's a lot of information out there.
I think what Peter's saying is, for example, some of the, you know, highlight some of the graduates.
Right.
Well, the people in the community, while they may have the websites that go to, generally they don't, I mean, when you're, when you have a marketing person working for you, that person needs to get the information to the people who are not in the school system, but the people who underwrite the school system, so that they understand that they're underwriting a very good system that produced very good results. I mean, I think that's very important. So I'm not laboring it, but, and I know you're busy with many things.
Point taken, point taken. We're working on the, also the logo and the tagline, you know, so...
All right. Michelle?
I was just thinking, I like, I agree with Peter, and it sort of fits with some feedback I got about the newsletter with the, you know, the college acceptances were listed in the newsletter, but it was incomplete, because it was a little early. So maybe if we thought about a second newsletter that had a different purpose, that really focused on the graduating classes and colleges, the awards that have been received this year, because there were some amazing things at the academic awards ceremony, you know, sort of like a recap, focus on the seniors, and then maybe even some recent graduates who we happened to have heard about some of the things they're doing in college, so sort of a, whereas the newsletter that goes out in April, right before May, could be sort of what's going on in the schools, just a look at the curriculum, it's a little, you know, keeping the community up to date on what's going on on a larger scale, but...
I'm just trying to do a scene.
To me, we could do a second, smaller, but focused on graduate newsletter. Yeah, I don't know, what do you think, Pat?
Further to Pete's comment, I just wanted to indicate that I happen to be attending an event after the graduation, speaking with someone from the community who asked me, somehow the topic came up of distracted driving, and said, "Wouldn't it be great if there was like an app to your phone that would disable it, you know, once the car was in motion?" And I said, "As a matter of fact, not only does that app exist, it was created by a Chicago student," and the guy practically fell out of his chair, he could not believe it. And, you know, just gotta get that word out.
Well, this is going out, so hopefully we'll get some newspapers. All right, Peter, thank you for that.
And it's a draft, by the way, just so you know, we're still working on proof.
Do you have...
I just wanted to finish this, sorry. We do have some personnel appointments. Jennifer Carnes will be a special ed teacher at SVS. Teresa Galga, speech and language. Jill Moran, special ed teacher. That's the point five at WPS The Reach Program. Lynn Logo, that one-day school psychologist. We have three transfers. Becca Matari is going to be the math interventionist at WPS. She's moving from the first grade teacher, and she's back there, way serving as you are. Karen Viles is going to move to be Director of Technology Integration, Communication, and Community Outreach. And then Susan Yubaldi will be the reading interventionist at WPS. She is at, they're both, she's the special ed teacher at WPS. And that is my report, until later.
We have to...
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Recalled Amy Cabela, grade five teacher, excellent at Booth Free, has been recalled, she'll stay in fifth grade. And Caitlin Clark is going on extended leave for one year if the board approves it. She's the art teacher here, and she needs it for personal reasons, so that needs to be addressed.
I'd like to move that we approve an extended leave of absence for Caitlin Clark, art teacher at Chicago Valley School, for the 2015-16 speech.
Second.
All right, it's moving to second, it's starting for the discussion. Is there anything we need to know about this that we can talk about in possession?
No, it's just, just little children. This is unpaid.
She'll be missed.
Yeah, she'll be back.
Okay. Okay. It's moving to second, and any other discussion? All those who've voted say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Our investors, thank you. Education, item eight, our education agenda. Pat, did you want to address this?
State of the schools, we do it every year, the last official board meeting in June. I'm glad, or two of our new board members are here, so you can see all of the great things that have happened this year. I've asked the principals to, you know, just focus on a couple of highlights, because there are so many things that we can focus on, but I am very proud of the work that we've done. I think that we really have made some great strides in the last couple of years, and I think you will see that with Mrs. Colella, starting first.
Hi, everybody, thank you. On behalf of the administrators, we thank you for allowing us to present tonight. It's exciting to do so at the end of the year. We know that you have seen all our newsletters throughout the school year, we didn't want to repeat a lot of that stuff. We kind of, at the elementary level, Emily and I wanted to focus in on our vision and mission, and so we chose some important words from our vision and our mission to kind of highlight our schools. So those words from the mission and vision that we included in our little movies are the following: achieve, inspire, imagine, and collaborate. So throughout my particular iMovie, and Emily will talk about hers, you will see that embedded throughout. There are some, before I even turn it on, there are some key look-for's within the iMovie that I want you to notice as you see it. In particular, with collaborating, you'll see powerful opportunities for multi-age learning in addition to our K1 configuration. For example, you'll see grade four and grade five students working together. Teachers collaborate to make opportunities happen throughout the year. And inspiring, and obviously collaborating and inspiring go hand in hand. But for inspiring, you'll see that we break through classroom walls and find inspiration in and outside of our school communities. You will see students meeting together, you'll see some Google chatting, you'll see some Skyping, those serving the military, we had students Skyping with someone from the military, someone from the medical fields, as well as a digital animator. And you'll see amazing class trips, like the Science Center and perhaps Sturbridge. And all sorts of technology tools that inspire students' learning today, chatter pics, you're gonna see a cute talking octopus, and that was a presentation that a second grader had put together. put together. And Chromebooks, obviously, in grades two through five. Achieving, this is embedded throughout this presentation, which leads us to many student successes. So including the governor's reading challenge, and all three elementary schools had achieved that, and that was a nice celebration. You'll see motivated teachers committed to success of each student. You'll see great support staff, especially in, and I've talked about it before, the K1 configuration. We're so lucky to have someone so powerful in that class to work side by side with the classroom teacher. Imagining, you will see students being creative through self-expression, the integration of various strategies to show student knowledge. For example, you'll see the immigration simulation, which really was a fifth-grade simulation that was held at Booth Free School, but all three fifth grades got together, and what a terrific opportunity that students had to really imagine what it would be like. You'll see hands-on activities, and you'll see our schools, Booth and Burnham has an in-house invention convention. You'll see application of the common core, you'll see some research, some analysis, collaboration, and reflection. The Now Literacy is preparing our students for the future through organizing information and the world around them. Problem solving, you'll see that, that's a big part of our mathematics, developing mathematical minds, and building what we call a math life. You'll see reading communities, engaging, inspiring, and joyful and meaningful. You'll see, we also included a little bit about physical fitness, because we know art, music, as well as language, our Spanish program are so very important to our students. You'll see community. It's important to have our students participate within their own school community, but the community at large. So students connecting with their community in many ways. And lastly, you'll see responsive classroom, social and academic learning go hand in hand. So just keep those things in mind as you see Booth and Burnham's iMovie, and just sort of a celebration of the entire year in a happy way. We kind of wanted to end the year with something that's cheerful and enjoyable. So I hope you enjoy. If you have any questions, wait until, you know, we ask that you wait until after our presentations. Thank you.
Thank you.
I needed my tech help over here.
Cool.
I like green.
I love green.
I love green.
I am an octopus. Octopuses do not have any thoughts. They can...
Oh, we're here. The hair color can be improvised, and you use the principle of shadowed features to attract any pet hair.
Two hundred nine thousand. Four and two hundred nine thousand. Oh, got it!
Oh, number five, oh, number five, your digits are ending.
I'd like to recognize Jackie Calatine for helping me put this together. She's a tech champ in my mind, can do an awful lot, and loves to do this with kids. Actually, has taught kids how to do this, which is truly amazing. So that is Booth and Burnham, that's a year to glimpse, and hope you enjoyed it. Any questions?
Hello, everyone. Kathy and I worked really closely together throughout the course of the year, and we shared a lot of different activities. So for Washington Primary School, tonight, I'm gonna highlight one activity that really speaks to inspire, imagine, collaborate, and achieve. And so this evening, tonight, I have with me two of my teachers. I have a first grade teacher, Becky Matarri, if she can come on up here, and B.J. Hosking, our second grade teacher. And the two of them oversaw the Science Invention Convention this year that follows the Connecticut Invention Program. And so they were able to experience the entire process with students in our school from grades one through five. And we also will have one of our students share a bit later. So I'll have Becky begin.
Hi, everyone. And first, I just want to thank you all for all that you do. I know you give tons of your time so that we can do what we do in our classroom, and I really appreciate it. So I wanted to make sure you knew that. Okay, the Invention Convention process or program has been around for a very long time, and it can look very different in different school districts. From an afternoon, after-school club like we had at Washington Primary, to other districts much larger at an older level, they can have an integrated process where they're not only inventing, but it's included into the math program, the language arts, where children are marketing there, or figuring out how to market their program, and how to produce it, and so forth. So for our, the reason why it was developed was because the research shows that for children to be successful in our world today, they have to be creative problem solvers. They have to be able to collaborate, to come up with new ideas. They have to be able to persevere and follow through to create a product in the end. And they have to then be able to articulate and communicate what they have created and presented to other people. And so the Invention Convention came about from knowing that that has to happen, and what better way than to have children invent something and then have the ownership of that invention, because it'll highly motivate them to go through that entire process. So at Washington Primary School, the very first step that we take is to have a take-apart night, or take-apart after-school program, which is what we did this year. And it really inspires the children to see what an invention is. So this year, we had a variety of toys, the children came in, and they had screwdrivers, and predominantly screwdrivers, and pliers, and things like that, and they took apart the toys. And as they took it apart, we talked about the fact that somebody invented this, and not only somebody invented that toy, but they invented that spring that's in there, and they invented the screws that are in there. And wouldn't you like to be an inventor? And from that, children made the commitment, because it's a very large commitment, to be part of this program, to come to the Invention Convention Club after school, which ran from January through the beginning of April, almost every single week, one day after school. So it's a very big commitment, and it also is a program that is done largely at home. So they have to actually commit on a, in a contract that they are gonna follow through, because it's such a big process. So once they start coming, we talk about what actually is an invention. It's not just a light bulb or an airplane, as they read a lot of biographies about inventors, but it's also sometimes just a small improvement on something. And we talk about the pen. Started out as a quill, and then from there, somebody said, "Well, you know, the tip of this is always breaking, so let's create something with metal now," and they created the fountain pen. And then from the fountain pen, they said, "It keeps getting drops of ink on my paper and making a mess," and so somebody created the ball that goes into the ballpoint pen. And we continue through that process to the markers of today, and they realize how just something small can make a difference. So then we start talking about what are problems that bug you, what are things that you could do to improve upon, and create your own invention. And so that starts stimulating the process, and they come up with ideas that they want to invent. And while they're doing that, that's over a couple of weeks, we start doing things within our after-school club to help stimulate that collaboration and thinking out of the box. And that's what we're gonna start our movie with, is showing you some of those things that they're doing, and it's quite fun. And the boys and girls from, you'll start, it'll start with first graders, and how they're thinking through the process, and talking about and explaining their ideas. And it's not always succeeding, and how they have to reevaluate what they're doing, and problem solve, and try to do it in a new fashion to succeed. And they really do a great job persevering and explaining. I just want to make sure in my notes that I covered everything that I wanted to, and I think we're good. So we get to put on the movie now.
Washington Primary students recently completed the Invention Convention. This was an extra opportunity available to students interested in science, technology, and engineering. The Invention Club met after school with a series of problem and solution exercises. These included building a straw bridge and bubble blowers.
To make it stronger.
Stronger layer, and let's, so we have more ready to...
Trying to make a supporting base for our thing to try to go as far as we can beyond the light block.
Students thought of problems they had in their everyday life. These inspired their inventions.
I'm trying to solve getting my, forcing my little cousin into the car seat, because she doesn't want to go anywhere.
So what's your idea?
My idea is to make an invention, like a car seat, that dispenses like stickers or something, so it encourages her to get into the car seat without falling.
Sometimes I like to like, lay my tablet and break down stuff, mostly brown paper, that more grease will wash from both pieces of paper. But I made this because now I can just like, break down, and then I can lay my tablet and break some glass.
When I come home, like, mostly every day, there, my girl's all over the bedroom, and I want a faster way to clean them up.
I usually go on a ride, and I have a drink, and it spills a lot, but in the cup cradle, it balances the cups.
Did you have any problems with it?
With my prototypes?
How many did you have? You have, I see there's one up there.
I had two.
You had two prototypes?
Uh huh.
And you fixed those, it looks like?
Uh huh. So the first one, that's the keynotes kept falling off, and there was enough keynotes for evening.
All students search for their inventions on Google and store websites before they made their own.
Well, I'm searching up keywords about my invention to see if it's already invented. I see that's not invented already. So now I'm gonna make it.
Students, lastly, practice their presentation skills. Here are their finished products.
That saves you time during the day, doesn't it?
Yeah. The last time I used it, it took me five minutes to do like, half a...
Half a minute.
Because that means, it makes it move.
Yeah, usually just bending it out every time, putting it in a box, it's out.
So I could open it, and then you could like, pull it out, and then back, and lay down.
I wonder how you put the, your...
So if you look here and here, it'll detect your, the holes in your hand.
People that are construction workers, and they can just, under a car or something, toy, you fix something, they can just grab, they can just grab something metal and take it out of their hand and bring it back to them.
I made this invention because I thought it'd be very useful for joggers, because usually they have their keys in their pocket, and they often fall out. So I thought, why not make a hat with a pouch in the back, and keep the key safe in that pouch, and it won't fall out.
Now you can even reach it in the back there. That's even better.
It is called the Icy Night, and you're icy, we're not, that's my slogan.
This program led to one student being selected to go to the State Invention Convention held annually at the University of Connecticut.
So the best overall tonight will go to Pam.
You are so welcome, you're my friend.
So we took the Invention Convention as just a representative of what we value at Washington Primary School. So just wanted to speak quickly about some of the other values we have, and how the Invention Convention ties into those values as well. And the first is, you know, how important the community at large is to our students and to our school. And in the process, you know, one way that that happened was you saw our celebration at the end, the actual convention, where families and community members got to come in and ask the students questions, and experience kind of the inventions for themselves. We also had a good representative, representative sample of judges that came in, with four judges, including Mark Leiner, first selectman, Shirley Barksdale, a teacher here at S V S, Monty Blaustein, a teacher at the guntry, and Fratelloni, who is a member of the Connecticut Science Fair Board. So, you know, getting our name out there in the community at large was important.
So I could open it, and then you could like pull it out, and then back, and lay down.
I wonder how you put the, um, your, your.
So it, if you look here and here, it'll detect your, um, your, the holes in your hand.
A lot of people that are construction workers, and they can just, uh, under, under a car or something, toy, you fix something, they can just grab, they can just grab something metal and take it on their hands and bring it back to them.
It falls on the table.
I made, I made this invention because I thought it'd be very useful for joggers, because usually they have their keys in their pocket and they often fall out. So I thought, why not make a, a hat with a pouch in the back and keep the key safe in that pouch and it won't fall out.
And then.
Ah, you couldn't even reach it in the back there. That's even better.
And, um, you probably didn't feel it off. It is called the Icy Night, and, um, you'll hear Icy, we're not teeth, that's my slogan.
This program led to one student being selected to go to the State Invention Convention held annually at the University of Connecticut.
So the best overall tonight will go to Paris. I thought you are so welcoming, my friend.
So we took the Invention Convention as just a representative of what we value at Washington Primary School. So just wanted to speak quickly about some of the other values we have and how the Invention Convention ties into those values as well. And the first is, you know, how important the community at large is to our students and to our school. And in the process, you know, one way that that happened was you saw our celebration at the end, the actual convention, where families and community members got to come in and ask the students questions and experience kind of the inventions for themselves. We also had a good representative, representative sample of judges that came in with four judges, including Mark Leiner, First Selectman, Shirley Barksdale, a teacher here at S V S, Monty Blaustein, a teacher at the gunnery, and, and Fratelloni, who is a member of the Connecticut Science Fair Board. So, you know, getting our name out there in the community at large was, was important and definitely indicated here with the Invention Convention. So the judging circle happens, and it's a chance for the students to ask questions to each other and kind of showcase their learning and their inventions. And we saw the, the award ceremony at the end, you know, something we love to do at W P S is celebrate our accomplishments. And we saw, you know, a great example of that there. And, you know, then taking our learning and bringing it to the community at large is what happened. Paris is going to come up in a second and share how his experience representing W P S at the State Invention Convention at UConn. So our winner here, Paris is, is ready to come up and say a moment or a word or two and answer any questions we have. All right, thank you.
For each of the inventions, the children not only had to invent, they had to create these presentation boards, and they had very specific criteria that they had to meet to go to the state level, including the size, the things that are on it, and so forth. So, why don't you tell them a little bit about what it was like to go to the UConn, Connecticut Invention Convention?
Well, I, I noticed there was many other kids there that worked really hard to make it to the, to UConn. And I think they should be really proud of themselves. And I realized that many of the inventions had to do with several companies that came down there and gave awards to children who made inventions having to do with the environment, fire safety, and medical issues. And I, I think these, all these inventions were very good. And I'm really proud of my invention. And. Uh, basically, it, it's a hat and it has a pocket in the back. And, um.
Bring it on up here, we'll see it.
Pretty much, I put a key in it. Uh, it was made for, um, people that often run, but they have like their key in their pocket and it falls out a lot. But with this, it keeps it in your hat, safe, and it doesn't fall out. And I tested it before, it didn't fall out, so I believe it works.
It's going in the shark tank.
Where to pass around, trust.
I love that show.
I only have one question. Have you applied for a patent yet on that? You should.
Yeah, absolutely. I've never seen that.
Who came up with the title, the name?
Me. I just started it.
Now you have to market it.
And.
I could really use one of those, huh? You get that patent.
I want to know how much running you did in order to test it.
Twenty minutes of running, twenty minutes.
Oh yeah?
I bet you did.
Does it work with Red Sox? Not to me, that's a shame.
Maybe, maybe if you like the Red Sox, sure, but not for me.
Yes, me.
How many, how many other, approximately, kids were at the, at UConn?
Uh, I thought they said like more than a thousand.
Wow.
How long does it last up there? Was it one day or?
Uh, one day, uh, yeah. And from like nine in the morning to four or five, I believe.
So very poised, speaking in front of us, I'm very impressed. Excellent.
Paris, did you get to see that, what the other kids did?
Uh, yeah, we got to look around at other kids' inventions. And they, they were really interesting. And it kind of inspires me to do more with my invention, and I can make it even better.
What was your favorite besides yours, which is amazing? But what else did you think was pretty cool?
Hmm, hold on. Uh, well, there was one that was pretty cool. Uh, it was like called the Band Ice. It was a band-aid with like this mini ice pack attached to it, which it was, um, was really cool, because usually you use an ice pack and then you put a band-aid on, but with this, you can just like put it on right away and don't have to do anything else.
Well, thank you very much for coming in front of us. Are you looking forward to summer?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Paris. I just wanted to extend my appreciation to V J and Becky. This is really a very extensive process, and they did this all in their own time. And I think the students really benefited from this experience. And I can see the kids propelled to think about new ideas because they're anticipating it occurring again. I have kids come, "Are we going to have that Invention Convention? I got a new idea now." And so they're keeping their eyes open for those possibilities. So I do appreciate their hard work and thank them for coming tonight. I also want to respond that at the Connecticut State Invention Convention, they do issue patents out to certain inventions right then and there. So it's really a very extraordinary experience for especially those students who have developed things that are pretty awesome. And there are people that are right there looking right away to offer those opportunities. So usually they recognize at least a handful for patents, so.
This one that he went to, is it all grammar students or all?
No, it, um, actually kindergarten students all the way up through high school. And I've been to a few myself, and, you know, it's, it's pretty impressive. And UConn is just impressive with their science program anyways. So they often have, I don't know if Paris had the opportunity, but students, you know, undergrad and graduate students right there on the premise, like sharing their, you know, visions for science and math. So it's really great for the kids. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I just wanted to share too, that just as a parent, even though it's not necessarily a science project, I thought for my son, who was in this club, that it was a great introduction for him next year to sort of get a taste of working on a science project and then kind of having that process, which I was really excited about. So I thought that that was a separate, for me, separate plus that really made him excited, I think, for next year, for the science project.
Well, I left my talking octopus at home. Doing this the other way around next year. Also not nearly as cute as Paris, but I'll try to entertain you with the high school stuff, the whole high school. As I was putting this together, Mrs. Ferrera and I, poor Mrs. Ferrera, who has a most miserable case of poison oak that extends, extends into her eyes. So we've been mostly doing this by phone. If you know Lori at all, you know that she pretty much prefaces everything with, "I look ridiculous and I'm not going out in public," but she really can't. But anyway, as we were talking about this, I was so impressed with how much we've done this year. And I have a sheet for you, and I'm really glad now that I put a picture of graduation, because it's kind of cute, just saying, okay? But I think you've probably heard ad nauseam about our N E S visit. That obviously is a highlight of our year. And I think that most importantly, N E S brought us together as a six-twelve school. When you, as a faculty, write a 200-page self-study, when you create seven evidence boxes attached to each of the individual standards, and when you decide what kind of celebration you're going to put together to introduce a visiting committee to your school, you bond. Whether you like it or not, you bond. And our staff did that in a big way. And I think the, probably the most interesting thing, the, the most rewarding thing about our N E S visit was how many teachers came up to me afterwards and said, "You know, you really pushed us through, you know, making sure that we did this really well and making sure that everything was included." But after the celebratory Sunday, they saw it all come together and they all saw that big picture. So it's not surprising that one of the comments from our chair was that we were cited, most importantly, for being a vision-driven school and making student success our priority. The report is not ready yet. I anticipate it will be very soon, and I look very forward to sharing it with you. Curriculum and assessment. We have undertaken an initiative with Mrs. DeBrito and Mrs. Ferrera to redesign all curricula in the middle high school to align with Connecticut Common Core, and of course, to increase rigor, as we always want to do with continuous improvement, and to increase real-world relevancy. We expect that this will be complete by the sixteen-seventeen school year. However, we've already written more than 55 curriculum, and that's in one year. They are all in line with the, the Connecticut standards, the core curriculum, Common Core, getting them ready for S V A C, all kinds of rigorous and challenging things, as well as being vertically aligned, grade six through grade 12. Again, as I said, this, the study and these initiatives are truly making us a six-twelve school. We, one of, some of the highlights that I see as I go through these curricula and, and we, we look at every single one of them is that reteaching is an expected practice, much more than, do you get the grade? Do you understand the material? Is very, very important. Do you walk away having an understanding? What is it that we want you to know and be able to do as a result of each and every class in the middle high school? As well as common summative assessments. Many of you remember when you were in school, if you had Mrs. so-and-so for science, maybe you did this. If you had Mr. so-and-so in science, you had a very different experience. Well, that's all fine and good if you like Mrs. so-and-so or Mr. so-and-so, but you should have some assured learning practices that would get you to the next level. And commutative, common summative assessments do that. It does not make our teachers into, you know, being in lockstep. Everybody has their own personality that they put into their classroom, but kids know that they are on a similar path, so that they are prepared for the next level. Mrs. Lott already made an appointment and met with Mrs. Ferrer. Did she meet with you as well, right? With Mrs. DeBrito, Mrs. Ferrer, to review curriculum? And any of you are welcome to make that appointment to do that, even if you're escaping from the board. You're welcome to do that. We're, we're very happy to show it off for you. The Agri-science STEM Academy, I won't go into that too much. However, Dr. Cosentino, I can, Dr. Cosentino and I continue the Ag Road Show. We're becoming wildly popular. Invited to a series of parties and events, they just can't get enough of us. But I think that the public is very interested in what we're doing. And I think that they see that what we're offering is, is relevant and will help all students. And the thing that we're stressing, I, I think we get a little bit better with each one because we realize what the public wants to know and we hone our message to do that. Currently, Mrs. Files is working very hard with me, but it's mostly Mrs. Files on video, that will show the community why we want to do this. What is it about STEM that's so important? What is it about agri-science that's so important? Is it what I think it is, or is it much, much bigger? And obviously, the, the answer is it's much, much bigger than most. But since Dr. Cosentino and I have been out so much, I think we all know what it is now. So I think we've defined it pretty darn well. And the other thing that I want to highlight is that we will continue to be Chappag Valley School. I think it's very unnerving at times for people to think that we're going to create this new school, and maybe my child won't want to be a part of that. Absolutely not. We are still Chappag Valley School. We're still going to focus on the same things of continuous improvement, academic achievement, and the development of, of talent and interest in every student. Our, our core curriculum will remain what it is, but we will have new experiences to bring to all of our students when this program becomes a reality. As I talked to you before, we have become quite the comprehensive six-twelve school. Fifteen faculty members right now teach classes at both the middle and high school levels. That's pretty impressive. We have very, we have a very flexible teaching staff. They're committed to our learning environment and, and they're willing to go beyond their comfort zones to make that work. And I'm very pleased to tell you that. It allows us to be more flexible in our scheduling. It allows us to have students see a different view of the world. Being chosen to be in an algebra class early or a science class at an earlier time is not so intimidating when you're part of a six-twelve school. And we have kids that we can challenge at young ages. All grade levels are going to be encouraged to try out for a place. We're going to do more on a large scale with our school plays because we see what kind of talent our kids have. Our National Honor Society members reached out to the middle school this year. They were assigned to sixth and seventh grade homerooms, where they became mentors and available as tutors. Instead of saying, "We have people available and you can ask for them," those students made relationships with, with the little ones in, in those homerooms or advisories. And they did a lot of work with mentoring them and challenging them to go beyond where they were comfortable, the things in which they were struggling. I think most gratifying to me is how much our core values and guiding beliefs have become a part of our school, as I, I saw all but two of our senior projects during Senior Project Week. And, you know, I hop around from project to project. But time after time after time, I saw our kids making thoughtful observations and analyses about how core values and guiding beliefs led their project or framed their learning, how the learner outcomes were a part of it. And most often, it was a student saying, "Obviously, in my project," regardless of what it was, "you would see problem solving, but here's how I defended my conclusions and judgments. I wondered how I would use citizenship in this example, but then I realized that I use citizenship every day." They talked about going out to businesses, I love this one. Going out to businesses, and boy, did I use my citizenship because I treated them with respect and I was grateful for the opportunity that they gave me." Really nice stuff that I was hearing. So I, I think that was the most gratifying thing out of many, many gratifying things. Our grade seven students participated in a formal debate, which took a new meeting because our debate team has been so successful. And we are looking at next steps. We have had very few standardized measures in the middle high school, especially at the high school level. We've created reading benchmarks for grade six through eighth that are rigorous, and we measure our teachers, our instruction against that. We are looking to create those sort of benchmarks at the high school level and also, also in the math and science areas. These will very strongly impact our teacher S L Os. I'm sorry, I'm using alphabet soon. Our, our teacher, what our teachers want their kids to know, what they measure when they are writing their own evaluations. When they say eighty-five percent of students will achieve this, it will mean something that is standardized across the school and that you will recognize as something that is important. So that is a very important next step. But if I start getting into next steps, I'd be up here for another long time. And again, I did not bring my talking octopus, so I will close there. We've had a very busy year, a very gratifying year, and I'm very pleased to give you this flyer with a cute picture on it to let you know what good things we did this year.
Yes, Greg? Kim, I wanted to say that a couple of things that your presentation raised. First, you should be congratulated on another great Chappag graduation that has come off. Just a wonderful ceremony on a wonderful day, well-presented, and excellent. And that's the culmination of what you're trying to do for these kids. And I think you did them, you did the different proud. The other thing I would point out is, I, I know you, people are concerned that perhaps the STEM, the Agri-science STEM Academy, Mike Jones, that, is how we're going to be. And no, but what that's going to do, I think, is it's going to invigorate the sciences, engineering, the whole, the whole STEM program, and in the same process, invigorate every other program at Chappag. Because with more students, you're able to offer a richer, more rigorous program. And everything from the band to the sports teams to all of those activities which have students at them are going to get a lot more students in it. So it becomes a force multiplier for really making the school into a, giving you a lot more flexibility and creating a lot more varied program for the students, makes it a better school.
I agree, thank you.
So don't, I'm, I'm glad you've pursued it so vigorously. And the other thing I would note is, is that you mentioned the seventh graders debating. And I'm very excited to hear that, because debates started here again only the year before as a senior project, and this year was continued as a senior project. And I know one of the things, I, I served as an advisor to it in the first year. And one of the things I said is, you must get the middle school students interested and the, and the, you know, the, the high school students at the freshman, sophomore level. If you want this program to go somewhere, it's got to have roots and it's got to take root early. I am so thrilled that you've gone there in the second year of that, of that program. Fantastic work.
Thank you. It would be hard to say that you have defending conclusions and judgments as one of your learner outcomes and not engage in debate. That's really the, the finest form of that. And I should also thank the board, because not only was it a senior project two years in a row, but the board has supported that as a stipend, so that we can have a faculty advisor. And we'll have it each year, regardless of whether someone wants to do it as a senior.
So we are doing it, we're just putting it off for a year. My goals. So this is always a good night for me to do my goals because a lot of my goals funnel down through the schools. So I'm just going to quickly, I had given, sent this, but I'm just going to quickly go through them, and then I'll have you, be happy to answer questions. The first one is on the curriculum. You've heard all the wonderful things. I'm very, very proud of Teresa, DeBrito, and Lori, and Kim. Especially at the middle high school, they've done a yeoman's job to get all of those curricula aligned, written in Atlas. Just wonderful, making sure that they're assessed, making sure that teachers understand at the elementary schools also. So that, that really has worked beautifully. And I think when we took the S back, it, it, students saw that, you know, what we were teaching was really aligned with those relevant kinds of questions that forced a creative problem solving and critical thinking skills. So I think we're going to see good things from that. I am working constantly with Ann to, you know, to promote the region as best we can. It's a big job, and we do as much as we can. So there are a lot of things going on there. We've done TV shows, we've been in the paper, and this was just some of the list. I mean, we're in the paper all the time. We've got a lot of good press. We did a great job with inviting people to see the technology that's going on in our schools that really puts us, I can't tell you, head and shoulders above a lot of systems. I mean, there are systems that don't even have, you know, one-to-one technology, let alone what we have in our schools and we give to our kids. So a lot's going on with that, and that definitely is going to continue. We did some work with the K5 regard to multi-age classes and grades. We will continue that. I can tell you that Region Six brought in someone, a nationally known person on multi-grade and age classrooms, and the Warren School was very in favor of it. So I'm going to get that information, and maybe we can get someone here to do some work with us and the parents to see where we want to move. And of course, that will be part of a long-range planning, but it is an option to consider it. But I am very proud of the work that Mrs. Gesusa, Mrs. Colella, and the staff have done at Burnham for that K1 class because it really is beneficial to the students. It really is beneficial to the students, and that's why we're here. I think every day our leadership team gets stronger. We work very closely together. We meet, we argue, we disagree, we come to consensus, but we always do what's right for kids. So I think that that continues. Ann Baldwin has worked with us on our presentations. I think tonight's presentations were excellent, and so we're moving in that direction, and that will continue to be a goal. Teacher evaluation, it's always a goal. We're all working right now to finish all our evaluations. By June 30th, you have to get everyone's ratings to the state. Sort of the process of doing that. And we continue to collaborate and work together to make sure that we're all on the same page. Infrastructure, technology, Karen, Vic, Sheila, the tech champions, all do a great job to make sure that we all stay on track. Karen definitely has an overarching goal and to see how the system should move to the future. So we're very, very excited about that. I know that in the digital department that, what is it called? Changes every time, careers and, what's your department called now?
Career and Technology.
Thank you. It changes all the time. Career and Technology. We're introducing new courses to get kids excited about technology and mobile apps and architecture and graphic design. And, you know, we, we really do very fine work in that area, including the TV station. There's a lot of shows on the TV station. There are a lot of shows, and they're also on our website, and they're on YouTube. All you have to do is, you know, sit down with, you know, a beverage of your choice and some chips and chocolate, and you could be a whole weekend to see what's going on at the Chappagh School. So tell, you know, your friends and family about that and people who want to know. That's all they have to do. And if they don't have any connections, tell them to come here, and we'll put them somewhere and they can watch here. But there really is, there's a lot going on. NIASK was a big success. I'm looking forward to the report. There'll always be areas that we need to improve on, but the staff really came together. The reports were excellently written. The students and the staff and the board really presented themselves as a professional organization, really into what's right for kids, so I was very proud of that. In that, we just have the alumni also. We are beginning to work with the alumni. Kim is doing a great job, Kim Lobland. And we have some things for the fall that we're going to try to do. In our newsletters, we highlight alumni, so there's a lot going on there. Communication, you know, if you have nothing, if you've never sat through the senior projects, you should come. They are unbelievably powerful, successful, the way the kids stand there and talk about their passion and what they've learned and how it relates to the core values and, you know, important subjects, and they're wonderful. And then the kids in the audience who are there asking questions, it really is. It defines what Chappagh is, and really proud of that. Done a lot of work with the guidance department and continue to do that. Teresa, myself, and Todd, maybe two or three weeks ago, went to the new SAT, changes that are happening in 2016, and how the state, we're hopefully, are going to make the SAT the new test for the 11th graders. And we feel really good about it because it really is aligned with a lot of what we do in the region as far as looking at literature, taking a stance, providing evidence, being a good writer, thinking critically. So I think we're really going to do well there. So we're going to have some workshops for the parents right away because the current 10th graders will take the new SAT. If you have 10th graders, you want to get on Khan Academy, K-H-A-N-academy.com. And that has Khan Academy, who we have been promoting for a long, long time, has hooked up with the College Board, and they have practice tests on there. They will track your work. They'll see where you need to make improvements, where you need to maybe concentrate on, and it's free. It is free. What they're trying to do, and Khan is backed by the Gates Foundation, he may not, no longer be because he's, I, he probably is because everything he does is for free, but basically, he's trying to level that playing field. So no longer do the kids who can afford Kaplan and the other courses have a heads-up on the other kids. This is for everybody, and it's free. So really excited about that. I said, yeah, TV shows, there's just too many to mention. There are too many to mention. You know, today I was with somebody, "Did you see the TV show yet?" I said, "No, I didn't." And she said this to me last week, and I said, "Yeah, I will, I promise." You know, you really have to spend time and watch the TV shows, but they're great, and our teachers are being very, very creative with them, as are the kids. Board of Education, you know, we continue to grow professionally. I think we, you know, are, need to remember that we're a professional group, and I think we do that for the most part. We have to learn to listen more and talk less, which is a famous poster, you know, God gave you two ears and one mouth for a reason. So, you know, that's something that we need to work on. But I think we, we are definitely, every year, gelling more and working better together, and we'll do some more work in the summer. Referendum. Well, we'll see what happens. That's really hooked up with Castle Booze right now. We do have the five science labs hanging over here. We're going to see what happens with the agri-science over here. If we get the agri-science, we move forward with both of them. If we don't get the agri-science, we will then go back and look at the science labs, see what we need, and move forward with just that. So hopefully that won't happen, though. I think the budget season went very well. Bob does an excellent job, really guiding us, and between what he does with electric and gas and medical and health and whatever, he's like a magician, and, you know, we're lucky to have him because he really does understand that. And so, and we came under budget, so that was good. And I think our townspeople and community members appreciate that. We're using our money, we're being fiscally responsible, but we're still moving forward. The agri-science, Kim talked a lot about it, we'll see what happens. Just additional information, I was very proud Karen Files did lead the way with a lot of input from all of us. I thought our district newsletter was outstanding. I was elected to the AASA governing board for three years, so I'll be in Washington for three days in July. I was also the vice chair of the Litchfield County Superintendent Association. The Teacher of the Year we're putting off one year. And then, just, these are just some of the awards that were won at Chappagh. And you're right, people need to see these things. So we will make sure we get this out, but this is really, you know, we have a small school, but we're very dedicated to our athletics. We're dedicated to our academics, to our music, to our theater, and it shows when you see all of these wonderful awards. So that is my report on our goals.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the superintendent?
I'm exhausted. Between what the principals have reported, what you're reporting, it's been an incredible year, and I thank you and the administrators so much. I'm so proud. It amazes me. And then when you throw on top of all those great achievements, the NIASK, it just, it's exhausting. I'm done.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Anything else for the superintendent? All right, thank you. Okay, now to the exciting part of our agenda. Item nine, policy, second reading.
Oh, seriously? Sorry, Gavin.
4112.2, security check.
All right, 4112.2. This is, both of these policies are up for a second reading. Neither of them have changed since the first reading, and both of these were updates provided by KAB, mandated compliance with current law.
Greg? Who have we approved? Policy 4112.2 for a second reading?
Second.
All right, it's removed and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, it passes unanimously. 9.2, second reading, policy 4112.5, security check, finger tick.
Same. This is up for a second reading. There are no changes from the first reading, so this is mandatory language to be in compliance with the law. Yeah, that's it.
Move to accept for a second reading.
Second. All right, it's removed and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Michelle, but I know a lot of work in the process. All right, item 10. To consider it appropriate, approve request from Busutani Valley Association to use Washington Primary School for their 25th Annual Auction to benefit the environment on November 22, 2015, waiving policy prohibiting, prohibiting alcoholic beverages.
So who?
Second. Michelle's got the second. All right, is there any further discussion?
They have just, so moved, subject to the usual stipulations that we have in these agreements, if you will accept that as a friendly amendment.
Yes.
The usual stipulation is that there's no alcoholic beverages on the grounds while any students are on premises, which is understood.
And also insurance is provided. There's a whole wrap, butter, bill stipulation.
All right, with that said, is there anything further? It's removed and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, that passes unanimously. Item 11. To consider it appropriate, approve Ed's specs for Chappagh Valley Regional Agri-science STEM Academy as recommended by the facilities committee.
So moved.
All right, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's removed and seconded. Does Greg would like to speak to it?
No, only that we have reviewed, this is a meeting, reviewed the Ed specs. We, we discussed them, and we can endorse them and suggest that we approve them at this point. Obviously, there will be more details worked out in the future as we move, you know, if we move forward with it, as we move to getting architects and whatnot, but as they stand now, they are well conceived.
And just for the benefit of the public, this is not something that's the first time that we've seen this, that the Board of Ed has reviewed these Ed specs, and this has been before us more than once. Is there any further questions or discussion? Michelle?
Is there anything in this draft that is different or new from the previous? Just one.
You struck the commentary about declining enrollment. That seems to be the change.
Yes, yeah. Because it wasn't appropriate for that, say the Ed specs.
Right. It's not, yeah.
Anything else?
I just, I've always asked the same question. How much of this is, was a study of our projected needs for this area and how much of this was, you know, learned or inherited or studied or received from people who have gone before and advise us as to what has happened, like say, Nana Wogga, the CNO?
Right.
And then how much of this is kind of groundbreaking because we are the newest agri-science center? Can you give us just a quick kind of precis on how much is particular to us, how much is received, and how much is going to be, you know, groundbreaking or, or new in terms of these? Because Ed specs are not just moving space, they have to do with programs.
Kim, did you want to hear of this?
I'd be happy to. I think I could encapsulate that pretty nicely.
Well, if you, if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you wouldn't mind.
I'm sorry, not at all. I just love to see myself on that. Okay. The concept itself is groundbreaking because we would be the first agri-science STEM center, and we would be a school that is designing the program so that it has an impact on all students. It is not an isolated program as it is in, in many of the schools, and, and, you know, for good reason, it was put into place to have a, a separate program. We're not doing that. That's why we added the STEM, that's why we're doing the kind of planning that we're doing, to incorporate aspects of STEM throughout the curriculum and to share those resources to the extent that you can when you utilize state monies. So that's the real groundbreaking piece of what we're doing. Obviously, we did think about the declining enrollment. And when Bill originally called me and said, "I don't know why we didn't think of this sooner, we should work together on this," obviously, the declining enrollment was in my mind. However, what's great about this is that it does solve a problem for us, however, it also solves a problem for lots of communities that keep getting their students turned down for this wonderful opportunity. So we are, it, it's, it's a happy coincidence that it helps us because we're also helping others. So I, I think that answers the three things that you said. So yes, it addresses our declining enrollment. Yes, it fulfills a demonstrated need in the other communities that we would serve. And yes, it is groundbreaking because we're looking at it slightly differently than other programs have looked at it in the past.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I just wanted to make sure that we really put a, you know, a point on this as we vote on this, what we're doing is something that is, is obviously new for us, but also new, period, and rather exceptional, and that these Ed specs are the foundation for that.
Absolutely.
Greg?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I've read where one of the, one of the school districts in our Ketchikan, in what would be our Ketchikan area, the city of Danbury, is actually expanding its high school because it has increased enrollment. And so would they, and it is the largest high school in Connecticut.
More than 3,000 students.
In fact, I believe it's-
Is there any further questions or discussion? Michelle?
Is there anything in this draft that is different or new from the previous? Just one?
You struck the commentary about the declining enrollment. That seems to be the change.
Yes, yeah, because it wasn't appropriate for that, so the ed specs.
Right. It's not.
Anything else?
I just, I've always asked the same question. How much of this was a study of our projected needs for this area and how much of this was, you know, learned or inherited or studied or received from people who have gone before and advise us as to what has happened, like say, Nana Wogga, the CNO?
Right.
And then how much of this is kind of groundbreaking because we are the newest agri-science center? Can you give us just a quick kind of pre-see on how much is particular to us, how much is received, and how much is going to be, you know, groundbreaking or new in terms of these, you know, because ed specs are not just building space, they have to do with programs.
Kim, did you wanna hear of this?
I'd be happy to. I think I could encapsulate that pretty nicely.
Well, if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you wouldn't mind.
I'm sorry, not at all. I just love to see myself on that. The concept itself is groundbreaking because we would be the first agri-science STEM center, and we would be a school that is designing the program so that it has an impact on all students. It is not an isolated program as it is in many of the schools, and, you know, for good reason, it was put into place to have a separate program. We're not doing that. That's why we added the STEM, that's why we're doing the kind of planning that we're doing, to incorporate aspects of STEM throughout the curriculum and to share those resources to the extent that you can when you utilize state monies. So that's the real groundbreaking piece of what we're doing. Obviously, we did think about the declining enrollment, and when Bill originally called me and said, "I don't know why we didn't think of this sooner, we should work together on this," obviously, the declining enrollment was in my mind. However, what's great about this is that it does solve a problem for us, however, it also solves a problem for lots of communities that keep getting their students turned down for this wonderful opportunity. So we are, it's a happy coincidence that it helps us because we're also helping others. So I think that answers the three things that you said. So yes, it addresses our declining enrollment. Yes, it fulfills a demonstrated need in the other communities that we would serve, and yes, it is groundbreaking because we're looking at it slightly differently than other programs have looked at it in the past.
Greg, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we really put a, you know, a point on this as we wrote on this, what we're doing is something that is, is obviously new for us, but also new period and rather exceptional, and then these ed specs are the foundation for that.
Absolutely.
Greg?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I've read where one of the, one of the school districts in our catchment, in what would be our catchment area, the city of Danbury, is actually expanding its high school because it has increased enrollment. And so would they, and it is the largest high school in Connecticut.
More than 3,000 students.
In fact, I believe it's, it's up there in probably the top 50 high schools size-wise in the United States. It's certainly one of the larger ones, and so with a major piece of our catchment area expanding in size, that's another reason to wanna do this because not only are you making more seats available for an expanding population, but you're also bringing those seats closer to Danbury than the otherwise.
They drive right, yeah, close to get to Nana Wogga, that's right.
So I think it's not just beneficial for Region 12, it's beneficial for the whole catchment area.
Exactly right.
And it allows us to play a good role and a part in the entire regional area that we have as catchmen. Oh, yes, yes, and Pat, you could probably say more about this, but Danbury is also about a magnet school, a new magnet school that is.
It's a STEM school.
It's a STEM school. And so this adds another dimension, something that can, that can integrate with that whole concept and just provide a better education and another region, another reason for people to settle in the greater, you know, Danbury, Region 12 area.
Exactly right.
All right, thank you. Don't worry.
I think this is a unique opportunity also, and you're talking about the Westside Middle School Academy.
Yes.
I think if we adopt this tonight, there's no reason not to. I would love to have Ann Baldwin send a press release, short, simple, sweet, that this is unique, because we aren't talking about the STEM as much as we should, and I think we need to push that, and how unique and wonderful that we're gonna get a lot of kids in and service a lot of kids and go in a whole new direction. It is new territory, as you said, and that should be what Ann Baldwin has out there in a, a press release, and the peg is our adoption of the ed specs tonight. So you always need to peg first, a news story, this is it, and that's the topic.
Yeah, that's good point. Peter?
Have we spent any time with the Finance Committee and the Selectmen on this guide?
Yes, a lot of time. Yeah. We, I remember a meeting, actually, with the Finance Chairs and the Selectmen and Pat and Kim.
It was one of the first ones, yeah.
Yeah, and I was at that meeting, so yeah, there has been a good dialogue.
And the Selectmen were all at the ag shows in their towns, they were there. I keep them up to date, just like I keep up you up to date, the three Selectmen, you know, we, we just have to be careful, we haven't gotten it yet, so we, you know, we have to have that balance of moving forward and not, you know, saying yay yay or, you know, cheering on because, you know, we haven't gotten it yet, so.
But we're cautiously.
But we're cautiously optimistic, yes, we are.
All right, is there anything else? The motion to approve the ed specs for the Chappagh Valley Regional Agri-science STEM Academy as recommended by the Facilities Committee has been moved in second. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, that passes. Thank you very much. All right, is there a motion to go into executive session to approve, to discuss the superintendent's end-of-year evaluation and to review non-certified staff 2015 and '16 salaries?
So moved. Second, I mean, too many breaks.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're in executive session, we'll take.